So chamber and obviously remotely through Microsoft Teams. And before we begin, I will ask councillor Kenley and MacLeod Harris to lead us in prayer.
Father Colonel and our blessed father, we're throwing you to your presence this afternoon seeking your blessing and your guidance to us as we gather to consider matters of importance to us as a council and as a community here in the Western Isles. We thank you that you have brought us here, you have placed us in the various roles that we are in and given us the skills and the abilities that are needed for these jobs. And we pray that as we now consider and look at the issues and the challenges ahead, that we would be led and guided by, that you would help us to know and understand what your will is, your good and perfect one. For that is our greatest desire is to do what you, you are the one who is in control of all things. And we seek your blessing and your guidance and help us to to make wise decisions, decisions that are for the good of our whole community. Help us to be gentle and considerate with one another as we share different views and opinions. That we would remember that we are all working to one end and that is the good of the people of the Western Isles. We thank you for the resources you've given us and ask that you'd help us to use them wisely and to the benefit of all. That we would be sensible in all that we keep us from being distracted and from being drawn aside by issues and challenges that are not wise and not valid, but that we would look to you and to your help us to have an eye space for me and be with each and every one. Thank you for all the work done by the chief executive and all the members and all the oppositions, everybody that is going on today. We thank you for everyone who is working to ensure all the services and all the provisions that we as the council are responsible and rolled out and are there to help us and now as this guidance of this meeting and be with us, the leastest keep us looking to you always. But we ask for your loving and precious goodies.
Thank you very much, Kenny. The meeting is now being recorded and will be available on the Corin's website following the meeting. And before we start, I'll now ask Derek Mackay, governance and elections manager, to read the sedative. Derek?
I'm sure. Leader?
I am.
Duncan McKinnis, MBE.
Sure.
And Barag, as Vathersay, Councillor James McLean. Ian Archie McNeil.
I'm sure.
Ian M MacLeod.
I'm sure.
Usian Jess, Ediscia, Agus Benavillia, apologies from Susan Thompson. Urtatua, Estafa Hussein.
Sure.
Usian Robertson.
I'm here.
The header, Paul Finnegan. Kenneth M MacLeod. Eirnain Lough, Robert McKenzie.
Yeah.
Angus Morrison. Skirug, Agus Carnabach. Ronald Fraser. Norman McDonald. Tuvshir, Agus Nish, John Norman MacLeod. I have apologies from Intuvshir Agus Nish, apologies from Councillor Max Swin. Lochatua, Donald F Crichton.
I'm sure.
And I have apologies from councillors Johnny McKeever and Carla McLean. St John Macchatua, Ian M McCauley.
Yeah.
Malcolm K McDonald.
Please, John.
Gordon Murray.
I'm sure.
Sean O'Macajais, Ray McKenzie.
I'm sure.
Angus McCormack.
Sure.
Dr Francis Murray. George Murray.
I'm sure.
Skirin Ruth, Norrie McDonald.
Yeah.
And Finlay M Stewart. Twenty-two membership, corner present, I feel.
Okay, thank you very much, Derek. And I am ruling items one, two, four and five as urgent to allow the coroner to consider these markers before our next meeting, which isn't scheduled until December. First item on the agenda is the minute of the meeting of the first October twenty twenty-five. It's basically for approval unless anyone has anything to bring up from the minute of that meeting. Okay, nothing in the chamber and I don't think there's anything online, so do you approve the minute of the meeting of the first October twenty twenty-five? Very much. And item number two on the agenda is the minute of the meeting of the Human Resources Subcommittee, which was held on the twenty-ninth of October twenty twenty-five, again for approval unless someone wants to just for noting, raise a raise a matter upon it, so it's for approval. Everyone quite happy to approve? Item number three on the agenda is declaration of interest. If members are asked to declare any interest they have in any items on the agenda, it would be helpful if members expressed why they are declaring an interest in the item concerned. So anyone declaring an interest in any of the items on the agenda? No, no one online? Okay. Now go to item four on the agenda, which is France and UK Government Structural Funding Pride in Place and reported by the Chief Executive and Chief Officer Economic and Community Regeneration. The report provides information on the UK Government Structural Funding Pride in Place Programme and seeks member input into the neighbourhood selection process. The Chief Executive Malcolm Bird and Anne Murray, Chief Officer Economic and Community Regeneration, will now do a presentation to the coroner. Mr Bird?
It's Murray. Thank you very much, Councillor, and thank you for agreeing to take this item as urgent. And indeed it is urgent and it's a very welcome item, but it brings it brings forward some some decisions that are required before the seventh of November, which is of course only a few days away, hence this this urgent meeting. The reason for this meeting is to advise you that we have been allocated twenty million pounds worth of UK government funding for the Pride in Place programme. Now, that's not money to us, although we are the accountable body and Miss Murray will cover that in more detail in the presentation, so we're accountable for this money, but it's not local authority money. It's to be administered by a board on which we will be represented, certainly at member level, possibly at member and officer level. Also on that board will be a member of Parliament and a member of the Scottish Parliament and no doubt others as well. All of that is still to be still to be clarified, but the urgent matter we have to determine today is the selection of what the what the scheme called, what the programme refers to as a neighbourhood. Now, it gets complicated and Miss Murray will take us through the various options that are open to us. One of these options is not, however, that the Western Isles, all of the Western Isles be classed as a neighbourhood. And the way that UK government has assessed eligibility for selection, I think it's fair to say is is different. It's not really what we would expect and it has some some interesting results, but we must of course, we we want to receive this funding, it will be very welcome indeed because it comes as two million pounds per year. That's very good indeed, it can be capital or revenue, but we have to respond. And we can make such representations as we want at the same time, but we must respond on the basis of the criteria of the scheme and identify a neighbourhood and define that, I suspect, as widely as we can. As the report says, there's no guarantee that the proposals put forward by the coroner will be chosen. This is not our decision, it is a UK government decision, it's their money, so it's their criteria. And and they'll announce, they'll make an announcement of that later this year. So with that, I think that's the introduction, that's the basis of this funding. I think at that point I'll hand over to the Chief Officer for Economic and Community Regeneration. This this full council is almost in seminar form at this point, but there are, there are of course recommendations under the report at the end of the report, which of course asks you to note the presentation and asks you to give your views on the options which we believe meet the criteria of the scheme and then they'll delegate authority to me and to Miss Murray to submit the response, obviously based on the views expressed at this meeting. Thank you, Councillor.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive, and I'll now hand over to Anne Murray. Anne?
Thank you, Chair. So I'm going to run through and have the slides that will provide you with an overview of what we know about the funding to do and just really inform the discussion on the next steps for the coronel. So as the Chief Executive indicated, the key action for us at the moment is that we are able to put forward one rural neighbourhoods for consideration to the UK government to receive the Pride in Place funding. The timescale indicated in the report for submission of neighbourhoods has, I would say, been extended from the seventh to the fourteenth of November. So that is helpful and we will speak back from another of the Scottish local authorities to the UK government regarding regarding the time scales. But I would hope that by the end of today, we would be in a position to move forward with the proposals together. I've got some slides that that will go through more, go through the funding in a bit more detail and importantly, some of the restrictions in terms of what can and can't be proposed in terms of what is a neighbourhood that can receive the funding and just take you through what some of the options might be as a sort of route. So just turning to what the Pride in Place programme is, UK government have allocated funding for for certain areas through their planning for towns since twenty twenty-three. So although Pride in Place is still really emerging in terms of what it is and what it might be able to fund, it does appear to be an evolution of the planning for towns work. So that's helpful for us to to understand how some of the how the programme might work and what it might be targeted at because there's still quite a bit of detailed guidance still to be issued. We do know that there's the programme objectives, these are to build stronger communities, to create thriving places and to empower local people. We, along with a number of other Scottish local authorities, have received confirmation that we will receive twenty million over a year. That will be based on two million per annum to be allocated for the project. And I should have said, a key principle of the funding is about targeting left behind, overlooked areas of the UK. It's about increasing role of control and role of prioritisation of how resources should be allocated to area-based improvement and regeneration. And that's what comes through in terms of what we know so far around the the distribution of the funding. And one of the key things is that it will be capital and revenue funding. So although the bulk of it is capital, there does appear to be around thirty-seven percent of revenue. That will be helpful in terms of what's needed to to run the programme and also potentially providing revenue support to to projects funded with capital. So as we know, revenue funding is very difficult to get, so the thirty-seven percent revenue indications is going to come at this stage. It's very much based on community-led decision-making. So as the Chief Executive has mentioned, the coroner will be the applicable body for the funds, which reflects arrangements that will go in place for a number of of UK government funding streams. We will channel the funds, we will ensure compliance and oversight and to audit, you know, audit the activity that takes place. But critically, what we are required to do is lead on the establishment of our neighbourhood board. So these neighbourhood boards, just to go into a bit more detail on them. The neighbourhood boards will be community-led, they will be required to to bring together residents, local businesses, other local partners, the local MP, councillors and other community leaders. And each neighbourhood board will have an independent chair, which is appointed by the local authority following consultation with the local MP. And and the neighbourhood board will be the entity that will engage and consult with the community, with the neighbourhood to set out a vision for the future of the neighbourhood in the form of a regeneration plan. Once that regeneration plan is developed and approved by UK government, that will be the basis then on where the funding goes. So there's a process that needs to be followed in in terms of where the funding will go. So the decisions on how the funding will be used will be made by the neighbourhood board in line with the English regeneration plan. And so we're expecting further guidance to come out from UK government on sending off and the the operating mechanisms for the neighbourhood boards, but important just to realise that they are a really critical part of the the decision-making process around the funding. And you will not be able to see this, I can send the link right. So just turning briefly to the type of projects that are likely to receive funding. I suppose the key thing to highlight here is just that the way it works with the plan for towns was that there was a list of peer-approved interventions. So if things are within that list and meet the regeneration plan, then the board can allocate funding to it without needing UK government approval. So I would anticipate something similar here and that there will be a long list of interventions that the neighbourhood board can support. And yeah, I think we can expect similar for for Pride in Place. And as you can see from the list there, it's a really complicated and long list of type, project types that that can be supported. So a lot of flexibility there in terms of local decision-making without having to revert back to UK government for approval on how funding is being spent. And and then within that, the the kind of project lines, it's a focus on themes such as safety, housing, high needs regeneration, transport is in there. So again, a broad set of themes and really that message about a lot of flexibility for the neighbourhood board to to set out its priorities. And so just going into the neighbourhood selection process, one neighbourhood in the outer territories will receive Pride in Place funding. And the coroner has been invited to provide feedback to the UK government by voting of November on which neighbourhoods should be considered for Pride in Place funding. So we can put forward more than one neighbourhood to UK government, it's only one neighbourhood for receiving the funding. The UK government have issued criteria for selection, which must be reflected in our proposals. So I'll go through that in in the next few slides. They've given a questionnaire that needs to be submitted for each neighbourhood and that was the that was the appendage to the report. And UK government will consider the the information that we submit to them. They're also consulting, as I understand, with the MP and the MSP and and other sources potentially. And they will confirm the chosen neighbourhoods in the outer territories and in all of the the chosen Scottish local authorities by the end of the year. So and I think as as the Chief Executive indicated, the the selected neighbourhood might not necessarily match that that is put forward by the coroner. And so before discussing the options, there is the UK government criteria that needs to be reflected in our proposals. And this is where it starts to get a bit more complicated. And so the chosen neighbourhood has to be a a geograph, what they what they say is a contiguous area. It has to be a geographically joint area. It can't be one area and this and one and that. It has to be a boundary that you could draw a line around. In terms of population size, it can contain no more than fifteen thousand people and no fewer than five thousand people. Although there can be a case made to slightly be be special, so I think really it's probably best to stick to the the guidance that they've they've issued on that. And then finally, and again, we do, it becomes really critical, the neighbourhood must contain one or more of what the UK government have determined to be high need intermediate zones. So intermediate zones are essentially an area on a map for statistical purposes. UK government have provided provided us with a list of what are the higher need intermediate zones and what are the lower needs intermediate zones in the outer territories. So what we put forward has to have one of the high need intermediate zones in it. Lower needs intermediate zones can be included within the boundaries of the neighbourhood, but only where they're adjacent to the high need zone. So I'll move on to just the list of neighbourhoods and that will hopefully explain things in a bit more more context. So I'll just read through this slide and this seeks to explain methodology that's being used and where the different parts of the outer territories rank within this. So I'm I'm sure it's clear.
It doesn't seem to be clear at all.
No, I'll read through it. So UK government has supplied information on intermediate zones based on their methodology for the funding. So the high need intermediate zones in the outer territories are shown in here. So the first one listed there is North West Lewis, that's the top of the list. Then there's Barra and South East, then South Lewis, then Point, then the Baccala North East. So these are the ones that have been determined by UK government to be the high need intermediate zones. The lower needs intermediate zones are shown in amber. So these, I'm reading them just in the list of order in that table, are Haras, followed by Godby, followed by Stormy East, followed by, no, followed by Stormy West, followed by Stormy East. So to understand how they've they've come up with this ranking, what they've done is they've combined the Scottish Index of Multiple Deprivation, which most of people know as SIMD, and which we are familiar with, and something called the Scottish Community Needs Index, which is something that we are are less familiar with. The reason for this is that what they're saying is the methodology for the Pride in Place funding is too old. They're focusing on deprivation, but they're also focusing on social infrastructure, which is what the Community Needs Index is supposed to measure. And so we've got this situation where they've taken the Scottish Community Needs Index and they've combined it with the SIMD. Importantly, they've applied a greater weighting to the Community Needs Index compared to SIMD, which has led to, I would say, a few challenges in terms of what what we might understand and the reality is across the the outer territories in terms of deprivation. So as you can see, the outcomes of of the methodology are that North West Lewis is ranked as the most disadvantaged intermediate zone, intermediate zone in the outer territories. And Stormy East is coming in as the the least disadvantaged intermediate zone. Hopefully that is clear, I appreciate there's quite a lot of data there, but what I would want to is just a map that has been provided and this shows how that looks on a map. And this map is provided to us by UK government. So the high need intermediate zones are purple on this map. So you can see there, up to the side, there's the North West Lewis zone, then South Lewis, then taken down to Barra, South East and North East and the Baccala. Okay, so I'm sure that there will be some surprises at the application of the methodology at local levels. So it would be helpful to just look at the assessment from UK government compared to what we know based on SIMD alone. And I think from a kind of policy perspective, SIMD itself has have many limitations in terms of its application to the local context. So while Barra, South East, South Lewis and North West Lewis all continue to feature, you know, obviously when we look at SIMD alone, Stormy West stands stands out. And so I think that we we have discussed this with UK government. There are, I think, valid concerns on the methodology and how this could potentially lead to to potential exclusion of some of the most deprived areas from receipt of the funding. We have asked UK government about the methodology and pointed out the the limitations of it, but they have made it clear that the methodology cannot be changed. So so those discussions have been had, the method, we need to put forward options that fit with the methodology and the criteria. And so before we move on to discussing neighbourhood options, I'll sum up some wider considerations. Two million pounds per annum, it is a considerable amount, but there are risks of defusing impact of funding over too wide a geography. I think also there are going to be challenges around establishing a neighbourhood board over too wide a geographical area, getting consensus on priorities and a workable and plan. So I think that that does seem to be considered when we can have the the options to be put forward. And I think it is important to consider the limitations of methodology and the impact that this has had on Stormy West and in particular. And and I also just wanted to highlight that council ward boundaries don't always align with intermediate zones. So our mapping team will do some work on the proposals that are put forward so that it can be cleared how we split with the council wards. And so this slide just sets out some some potential options for consideration, bearing all of the the kind of parameters in mind. The first option, I think, would be to put forward North End and Barra. So that includes high need data zones in terms of SIMD and also clearly fits with the UK government's methodology. And this and it's fine in terms of population size. The second option, which would be North West Lewis and South Lewis, again, that would fit with the population size and also fits with the the methodology in terms of what the government has said are the high need intermediate zones. It does cover a wide geographic area and it could be challenging in terms of getting to a a regeneration plan that meets the list of funding dimensions. And clearly, I appreciate that members would want to think about putting forward an option which includes Stormy. Because Stormy isn't classed as a high need intermediate zone, and it needs to be put forward with, it can't be, Stormy can't be put forward one, so it has to be put forward in in conjunction with an adjacent area that's a high need intermediate zone. So the options here at at three and four, and it would be possible to put forward South Lewis, North West Lewis, Stormy East and Stormy West, or just South Lewis, Stormy East and Stormy West. And I think the third one there is is possible, but it doesn't scope to be unmanageable. And realistically, it's a it's a big area. And so I think practically, and option four there is is the most practical in terms of inclusion of Stormy. Just to be clear, it's not possible to put forward the whole of the outer territories or to put forward Lewis and Haras or Lewis alone due to population size. And based on the data, particularly the SIM, SIM, SIMD, there's, it would be difficult, I think, to argue for the inclusion of Haras and Godby in particular. And Point does come up in terms of the UK government's and all methodology also, probably what by opting out. And so really just a final slide thought before rolling out the discussion. I think there is scope for us to put forward three proposals for submission. And I have listed three here that bear in mind the the SIMD, the limitations of of the UK government methodology and also just concerns about deliverability. So these three here, they would meet the criteria, it would be possible to make a case for them. And I think we're really just looking for members to provide And I think we're really just waiting for members to provide feedback on proceeding with these or other options that they would prefer. I, I wouldn't want us to go forward with any more than three, I think that is, that is enough, we need to make a strong case. And but given the, the length of the questionnaire, I think three is a cheaper way. If you're happy to take any questions, we'll go back.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to pass over to the Chief Executive.
Yes, very, very briefly, I couldn't be more thankful and thanks for that presentation. As you can see, we've been faced with quite a difficult set of analyses. Uh, to, obviously we want to obtain the most benefit from this funding within the rules. Just to assure members that, as Murray and I have been through, uh, the, let's say, the, the difficulties of applying nationwide criteria to population sizes like this, I think they are mindful of that and we have pushed obviously the boundaries as far as we can. It is ultimately, I suppose, a political decision, but I didn't have the impression there would be much movement from the criteria which they've, which they've set. Uh, they understand, uh, the difficulties, what is South Lewis? Uh, after all, locks obviously, but does it stretch across to, to, to England and Berna? And, you know, there, there will be difficulties there just with allocating, uh, allocating, uh, funding if that's chosen to be one of the areas. All of that has been put, put before them, as well as the obvious inversion of S I M D for Stormy, because that would strong away at the top, whereas the, the methodology that have applied would exclude, uh, both zones of Stormy from, from any assistance. So, so be assured, uh, these points have been, have been put. We have, um, we have been assured that we can focus funding within particular areas within the selected zones, but it can only be within the selected zones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief Executive. I will now open up, uh, the meeting to see what members are saying. And first of all, councillor Nolly Montal, Nolly.
Sorry, I was just going to punch George, uh, to Gordon's on line.
Okay, I can see Gordon, councillor Gordon, buddy.
Uh, thanks a lot, Convenor, and, um, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I'm glad to see that Stormy West is considered, um, because I, I, I would really want to propose that Stormy West is, is considered to be a part of that neighbourhood. Um, I'm glad to hear that the methodologies have been sort of questioned because you'll know, Convenor, as well as the Chief Executive, that the O H C P P, uh, they set up a rig, quite a rigorous process in twenty nineteen, because first of all, they ran a population profiles using the Improvement Service Community Profiling Tool to measure outcomes in health education and crime, et cetera. And then they cross-checked that every figure with Public Health Scotland and NHS Western Isles data, and I think that's strong quantitative, quantitative and qualitative evidence. And what, uh, the consequence was that was that the O H C P P made a decision, a formal decision, that Stormy West, uh, was one of the only two areas in the entire Western Isles had required urgent, strategic, multi-agency support. So what happened then was the Stormy West locality group was formed and it's been meeting quarterly ever since. And s- some of the, some of the stats, uh, that was brought up are, are quite stark. Um, for example, in the area, child poverty stands at about thirty six point four percent. So that's more than three times the Western Isles' average of eleven point eight percent and well above Scotland's fifteen point nine percent. Um, we've got alcohol-related hospital admissions run at about seventeen hundred per hundred thousand people. And that's fifty percent more than the Isles and triple Scotland's average. Um, we've got emergency admissions for our over sixty fives are, are double what they are in the Western Isles. And, uh, so th- these are not, you know, isolated figures. There's also concerns about maternal obesity and developmental concerns in young babies. So locality group meets and has put together a plan, a priorities plan, which, which has four outcomes. So i- it, the, the, the group has got the, the community associations, it's got H H P, U H I, Skills Development Scotland, it's got the NHS, um, we've got the full-time development worker, we've got the Cairns Community Association, we've got the COLA, Coling Learn, Community Learning and Development Officer involved. So there's so much that has been set up already and ready to go. And to put Stormy West forward would be completely consistent with what the O H C P P has, uh, uh, the con- concluded that Stormy West is requiring your urgent strategic multi-agency support. So I'd, I'd be really strongly suggesting that, uh, in order to be consistent with strategy for the wider public sector, that, you know, Stormy West is included in the neighbourhood. So thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Murray, councillor Nolly Montal.
Yeah, that's true. I, I think we'll have a conversation with Ann about how point, because it's a lot between one and the other. Uh, the best meeting of the year, one status and that or something, suggested that. I couldn't read it from.
Yeah, Point is three thousand and forty-four that it says is the population.
Three thousand and forty-four.
In terms of the intermediate zone, does that sound reasonably correct?
I think the electoral was about nineteen hundred, I think, or something, just under two thousand, so it would be about that. Yeah, uh, a- again, uh, I think it's hugely important that we, we managed to take advantage of this funding and Gordon Murray certainly makes a very compelling case for, uh, for Stormy West, uh, it's difficult to argue against the statistics that he provided there, uh, and the benefits that could possibly be derived from this funding. I'm interested to find out, the third objective said, uh, to empower people to take back control. I, I don't know who they're meant to be taking back the control from, given we're going to have an NP, an MSP, and possibly councillors on these various boards, and the chair is going to be appointed by the COLA, did I hear rightly as well? So I'm intrigued as to who the control is going to be rested from, um, given we're going to have so much input, not only as a COLA, but from a, from a, our elected members as well. So I, I don't know wh- what specifically that refers to, maybe we could have some enlightenment on that. It, it does seem to be, the whole thing seems to be a, an exercise in charity, which is very great, gratefully received. But, um, I, I, I think putting the, the meat and the bones of this is going to be a difficult exercise, but we have to pursue it because of the money involved and the good it can do. But, um, a- a- again, we need to be strategic in how we approach this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Nolly, Chief Executive.
Yes, just on that last point, Convenor, I, I, I agree entirely. I mean, then the next task, once the neighbourhood is selected, uh, is of course to select a chair uh, and to, to contribute to the membership of the board. But certainly, it's my view, given the needs of all areas of the Western Isles, that the, the criteria which the board should use should be as strategic as possible and to be, and be as, be as widely drawn as possible in relation to all public services. And you all know what I'm saying, uh, that will cover some public services that we would like to provide and are, and are unable to do so, either on our own, uh, or in partnership. So it, it should, I very much hope that the, that the funding will follow the community plan, the local outcome improvement plan, uh, and indeed our own corporate strategy such as that is legitimate. So, uh, that's, that's the next phase though, we have to, we have to have a neighbourhood, uh, however widely that's drawn, selected first before we can, before we can look at that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chief Executive. Anyone else want to come in? Councillor Angus McCallum.
Excuse me, thank you, Convenor. Uh, I, I know that over the years, we have condemned S I M D as any way of measuring anything at all in the Outer Hebrides, that, that the way of measuring things using S I M D just doesn't meet the needs of the Western Isles. And I particularly see this, um, when dealing with poverty issues. Uh, poverty issues are much more, uh, widespread, uh, than S I M D would suggest. And, and I would suggest to you that it's not a good measure of necessarily where the best need is in the Outer Hebrides. Um, having said that, I recognise the need in Stormy West, but we have been arguing in Stormy East, if I have to call it that, um, uh, uh, that the needs in that area are equal to those in Stormy West, but never has there been any assessment done of that, um, uh, other than some work done through the poverty group. Uh, so what I'm suggesting to you is that the, the statistics on which a lot of this is going to be based are not the best statistics necessarily for, uh, uh, bringing us to the best places to go. Um, I'm going to make an argument for, uh, an element of what has been called here Stormy East. Um, ef- effectively, it's the Sandwick Hill Project, which is, uh, hopefully about to be up and running, um, in the not-too-distant future. And as you are all well aware, um, in that area, there are two significant housing developments about to start off. There are already significant housing developments in the area, as is, and yet there is no infrastructure to support these housing developments. There are no shops, there is no place for you to go to get, um, see a doctor, anything, there's nothing at all in the Sandwick area to support the people. And I think we're getting to the stage where we really have to be serious and look at the area. Um, the area would perhaps reflect, um, the Sandwick Community Council area, which starts in Stanish and goes through to Melbus Brannagh High. Um, you know, a couple of, uh, uh, years from now, there's going to be an awful lot of housing in that area, an awful lot of people staying in that area, and yet they will have no supportive infrastructure. And, and I think that is a very powerful argument. And I think that you will find e- even in that area, that there are significant areas of deprivation, um, that we could allude to. The, the good thing about this particular project, if I could put it this way, um, is that, uh, it is at a point where, uh, if everything goes according to the plan, the portion of ground that where Sandwick Hill School is will transfer to the community and the community has plans for taking that area forward. And that would be to work with H H P, um, and any other lo- uh, local organisations to create facilities which will support the incoming population and the current population. Um, and, and I can't really see why, uh, support for that particular project is, is not going to be somewhere near the top of the list. And you have to bear in mind, of course, that, um, this is an area uh, that is going to be heavily impacted by the developments that are coming uh, in the near future through renewables. And we need to have as much support, uh, in that particular area as we possibly can, uh, going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Angus. Councillor Ian McCauley.
Hi, the Chair. Can I ask you a question before, before I make my point? Um. The three, the three areas you had up at the end, and are we talking having three neighbourhood boards? Or one neighbourhood, and these are going to be split into three geographical spread? Sorry, I'm, I'm, I don't know, sorry, I'm always never reselling everybody else.
Um, no, not at all, no. So what, what we're suggesting is to put three, three neighbourhoods forward and they'll choose one of them.
As what?
As the neighbourhood that will receive the funding. So say, for example, if.
Only one of these will get funded.
Only one of these will get the funding, yes. So, and then say, for example, if, if it was chosen that it was North West Lewis and South Lewis, there would be one neighbourhood board established for North West Lewis and South Lewis, and all the funding would go to that area.
That area and not to any of the other ones.
Not to any of the other areas. So only one area will be chosen.
Thank you. Um, so, I mean, their own priorities that, that they've been told that it was going to be town centres, jobs, transport links and local facilities and it, a lot of other places are going to lose out, but I think that's, you're telling us that's the way it's going to be. Um, I mean, at, at the end of the day, we, we can't be sitting here. Surely, the, the whole point of this is, is that we are just overseeing this and it's the islanders themselves. But do we, we have, we have to decide this before, the whole idea of, of this scheme, I thought, was that the islanders and the people then decided what the money was and where it was going to be spent. But you, you, we're obviously saying that we've got to decide where it's going to be spent before we even, sorry, sorry, Anne.
Can someone put off the lights, please?
It will be the community that decides how the money is spent, but we have the chance to, to shape or to, to have a say in what the area is. So we can put forward a neighbourhood, they might not decide to choose that neighbourhood.
What if they don't?
They'll choose another part of the Outer Hebrides, so.
And could we put forward two neighbourhoods and have four hundred fifteen thousand?
No.
No?
Nope.
It's going to be, okay, sorry, I'm a bit clearer now, thank you.
No, sorry, it is, it is very unusual.
Councillor John Cradon.
Thank you, Convenor. It is, the temptation is to be parochial, I know we can all indulge in that. Um, but I just noticed from the three options that, you know, North East, South East and Barra are all lumped together in one, in option one. Could there not be a, a more representative geographical spread to represent deprivation across the Western Isles? In terms of, you know, having a neighbourhood that would consist of areas in, in the US, Barra and in Lewis, possibly Haris, to make it more kind of equitable in terms of the composition of, of this neighbourhood? And secondly, is the criteria completely immovable? You know, it's very typical of central government to push something on as such, that one, one size fits all. Is there any flexibility at all where we could possibly, I know you've, you've had that discussion, but i- is, is that the end of the discussion?
Thank you, good, Convenor, I'll just answer briefly largely on the first point. Um, we did put forward an option which would have given, uh, something to every island community in the Western Isles. That's, that was around the old port of entry, because that would have favoured Stormy, Tarbut, Loch Madi, Loch Boisdal, Ballabannick as well, and, and Castle Bay, sorry if I've missed anybody out. Um, but that wasn't, that wasn't, I think, favourably received. Um, we would, we would obviously like to put something forward that, that focuses on need, that need across the Western Isles, that's, that's the basis, obviously, of, of how this chamber works and of how, of how we work and that, that would pick up, uh, in fact, something from, from each of the zones. Is the matter closed? Um, it's certainly closed as far as the officials go. Uh, what do we say to the Secretary of State or to, or to, or to others, of course? Uh, we can, we can ask that these criteria be valid, but there were certainly no indication at the meetings we've had that that would be, that that would be, um, favourably received. But of course, we can, we can ask and it may be that in addition to, in addition to selecting whichever areas uh, we decide this afternoon, um, you may wish to make these representations as well, we'd be quite happy to do that. But I'll, I'll hand over to, to Ms Murray.
The only thing I'll add to that.
Uh, sorry, Anne, can someone put off the light, please?
Thank you, Chair. The only thing I'll add to that is that the situation is slightly different in Scotland compared to England. So in England, they have been told what the neighbourhoods will be, whereas in Scotland, we have the opportunity, us and, and other partners have the opportunity to feed into the process. So the risk is that, um, they could just decide to, to choose, just look at the, the data and choose whatever, um, so, so that option could emerge.
Thanks for letting me back in again, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I thought I was fairly clear on this until Ian picked a couple of points and I realised there's a bits of this that still leave me somewhat baffled. Maybe Anne can possibly explain from for my general edification. It's up to us, as the Corla, to recommend a neighbourhood for the advancements of this project. Are we saying that we're going to choose three and recommend three and they pick one? Necessarily, do they have to pick from one of the ones that we recommend? Or do we recommend one and if they don't like it, they go somewhere else and pick another neighbourhood, possibly out with our definition? I mean, this whole thing smacks of just a bun fight over two million pounds. The rules seem, so arbitrarily has to create huge confusion. Does the neighbourhood that gets chosen in the first instance receive the funding for ten years, two million pound over ten years? Or is there a different neighbourhood chosen every single year? I'm still kind of confused as how do we ensure? It's up to us as a Corla to pick the neighbourhood we're putting forward. Is that taken out of the hands of the community to define what they want to put forward themselves? I mean, I I think this, it's a bit wooly, to say the least. The structures around this are, I mean, I don't envy Anne her decision making process of selling this to us and asking us to decide. I'm still confused as to what it is we're deciding on. Given that the government have decided these are the statistics you must place your criteria on and we will choose not necessarily from your recommendation. So, I mean, I I still think some of this needs clarification.
Hold on, who's got a light on?
I have.
Can you put it off, please?
Ms Murray will correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not deciding. We've been asked for a view. And I think it would be, I think it's right that the Corla express a view, no matter how we wouldn't, we would perhaps like to express different views, but but we have to, we have to choose. But we are suggesting to you that you might want to consider submitting these three options from which they will choose one. But it's their decision, they can, they could not choose any of our options at all. But we're obviously trying to give you options which give as wide a definition of neighbourhood as possible that takes into account our own assessments, which include, which would include, for example, Stornoway or whether we just, or whether we just go on the basis of of the zones they've identified using their own criteria. But it's entirely up to the Chamber.
Okay, thank you very much Chief Executive Francis.
Thank you very much, Convina. I I think quite a quite an envious position really, because we've been asked to make a decision which we might be criticized for because we're coming down, you know, in favour of one community over another community. And yet, at the end of the day, it's not our decision, they could overlook that decision. But meanwhile, we've, we've taken a position, which I I find to me, it's almost bypassing local democracy, which I don't particularly think is a is a good thing. The question I wanted to ask was, it says there, we've been asked for our view and the MP's been asked for his view and the MSP has been asked for his view, but they needn't go with any of these. So who else is giving views? That's what, I would be interested to know that.
Okay, thank you very much Francis, councillor Duncan McInnes. Can the lights go off, please, Lee?
Yeah, thanks, Convina. Yes, I'd have to, you know, support councillor Murray, you know, in his open, opening introduction because it's clear that, you know, the Stornoway West locality plan has been through the mill, as you may say, over a number of years. And it's got a proven list of statistics with a number of other organisations and partners involved in it. And during that, you know, Ben Bechler was also at that particular time identified, you know, as another area that had deprivation. And the suspicion to the last meeting, we did have at the community planning partnership, you know, the the plan was very well welcomed and, you know, had positive outcomes with it. However, you know, having a look at, you know, we're looking at ten years and a vision of ten years to the future. Because no, Stornoway West or, sorry, Lewis North West is coming out at the moment. We have to realise that that area is going to have four and a half million coming into it every year. You know, from if that project goes ahead. So that would certainly change, you know, the criteria of that area if that sum of money is coming into that community. And if that was factored into, you know, say, five years down the road after approving that area, you know, would that area require another two million, you know, in the next five years? So it's clear that one has to have a vision of ten years and what's ahead of us in renewables and where that money is going to go to and what impact those additional fundings into those communities will have, which clearly haven't been factored into any of the measurements that have been taken into place at the current moment in time. But certainly from a Stornoway West point of view, it's been already recognised by the Corla and all the other lead agencies in the Western Isles. You know, that that's the the area that requires most from a deprivation point of view, most need at the current moment in time.
Okay, thank you very much Duncan, councillor George Murray.
Thank you Chair, just following on from what councillor McCormack said. We've got two huge, really huge housing developments coming off in Melbus and Branagh High and then, and I'm getting confused with Stornoway East, West, North, South. Anyway, in Melbus East, I think it is, or Melbus West. We're hearing a lot about the housing developments there, but there is absolutely nothing that I've heard about infrastructure to support these fairly big developments. And there has been little or nothing done for the young people who live in Mackenzie Park at present in terms of recreational facilities. So we can build these nice houses, lovely schemes. We need to give the people the facilities to back it up. And the other, and one minor observation I've got, this all seems very rushed. How much notice did we get of this? You know, to, I know it's been extended to the fourteenth of November, but the seventh of November and here we are debating it on the fourth? It seems a wee bit hurried. Thank you Chair.
Chief Executive, just to pick up that point, Convina, this is certainly one of the most hurried processes, I think Ms Murray and I have ever dealt with. You wouldn't be, but you can see the timescales, I mean, we could, this comes to you urgently. The deadline's been extended by a week, but that doesn't change any of the information. It's extremely fast and it's, my opinion, it would benefit from a bit more, a bit more time and discussion, but we just do not have that luxury. We have been told that the fourteenth is a very hard deadline, so here we are.
Okay, thank you very much Chief Executive, I've got councillor Ray Mackenzie in the chamber and councillor John Norman MacLeod online. Councillor Ray Mackenzie.
Thank you, thanks, Convina. Yeah, there's one point, well, there's a lot I'm confused about, but did you say, I'm sorry, I'll throw the chair. Did you say that that next year might be a different area and it might be that? No, that the the ten million will go to one area.
The the twenty million will go to the select, yeah, the twenty million will go to the selected neighbourhood over the ten year period, so it doesn't change.
All right.
Okay, thanks Anne for clarification.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I can remember asking in this chamber many years ago about the time of Brexit, would the euro money be replaced by the UK government? And I think even the chief executive shook his head and smiled at that. There's no doubt about it that, you know, I'm very glad to get ten million, or two million times ten. That's very good over the next ten years, but two million isn't going to make a big dent in anything over each year over the next ten years. Fact that it's, you know, it's it's going to be the one area that's picked, I think that's very unfortunate that this small amount really in in the scheme of things, it's going to be just in one, one area. The locality plan, that was mentioned, of Stornoway West and Balavannic has been the two, two areas that were most deprived. And I I can see that these two can't be obviously combined from what Anna said. But I think we're just faced with the fact that we're just going to put these three areas forward. I know these Haris hasn't been mentioned. I'm surprised there hasn't been any representation today from from that area. But yeah, I I I don't think, I don't thi, I think it's, you know, a drop in the ocean anyway as far as comparing what we used to get from Europe. And that's Brexit.
Thank you very much councillor Ray Mackenzie, councillor John Norman MacLeod online.
Thank you, Convina. Just at the start, I lost connection, so I was actually present, you know, when you're probably when you're calling out who's present and who's not. Anyway, what I want to say firstly, I find it very unfair this, you know, like, I mean, there were suggestions that the money gets spread over the Western Isles completely, yes, that would have been much better for each community. Obviously, we're not going to get that. I don't envy Anne Murray's decision who's going to get the money. And you might have been better off going the England route where they just, they decide and not you, it's not going to be easy. I just want to mention, well, obviously, North West Lewis and what councillor McInnes came up with and said that shouldn't have any emphasis at all on where the money goes because these un-turbines, four point five million, so they're saying, and that could be years ahead, it might not even come to it or anywhere near it. And when I think of what is going to happen to our area, when it does happen, with the roads, what's going to happen to our roads and everything, it'll cause absolute chaos. So I'd rather not that was taken on board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much John Norman, councillor Kenny MacLeod, then councillor Malcolm McDonald. Kenny.
Thank you Chair, yeah, it's obviously hugely disappointing that Haris didn't feature in this. But I think, you know, the work that Anne and our team have done in a very short while, effectively, it's to no end because at the end of the day, the decision's going to be taken out of our hands. But at least we are, by putting forward these three areas, and I think that they're probably the best selected areas. I think we are showing the UK government that we're participating in this and we're looking to find the best way of spending the money in the hope that they will pick one of those areas that we see as needing money spent and that the whole of the Western Isles needs the money spent. But at least if the money goes for ten years to one of these areas, then at least that spreads whatever other money we get coming in in future years to the other areas that may not, that may lose out this time. So I think Anne should be commended for all the work put into this. And I I would go with putting forward these three in hope that the Scottish, the British government would actually listen to, to what we're seeing and put it into one of those. But at the end of the day, irrespective of what we say or what we say in here, it's going to make no difference because they make the decision at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you very much Kenny, councillor Malcolm McDonald, then the leader wants to come in as well. Malcolm.
Thank you, councillor Creighton referred to being parochial and I fully appreciate that. This structure, the structure for the neighbourhood board, who can agree with them, but we've got to put up with them. One of the things that councillors Murray and McInnes mentioned, Stornoway West. Well, one of the things is the town centre is in Stornoway West and also the port, the port where people arrive. And if that happens on on the bus station, the benefits to all the island, well, in Lewis anyway, will accrue from investment in Stornoway West. And we might even see appropriate toilets and which are the benefit to everybody. But going by councillor Kenny MacLeod there, he's been very, it's a real knight, not in armour, but accepting, you know, the proposals. It's the best we can do, that's about all we can say. And let the neighbourhood board or the government decide on which one of the three is accepted for the two million pounds a year for ten years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Malcolm, leader.
Thank you very much, Convina. Just to agree with the point that a colleague from Haris was making there. And also just to reflect on the whole situation, we've, we've spent the last few years asking for flexibilities around funding from Scottish government and we thought we were in that position. The UK government following the Community Rio partnership funding actually thought that process was reasonably good in terms of allowing us the flexibility to make decisions. So the the strict criteria that we put in this funding is really disappointing. But I'll I'll agree with pretty much the majority of our councillors, I think our officers are left in a difficult position. It also puts us in a difficult position as members to be, to be choosing certain areas over others when we actually don't have that final decision. It's really quite an awkward place to be. But I would suggest that the three areas that Anne's identified are the three that we put forward. And we'll see what comes from that. But yeah, I think we made all the representations and made the points of concern that people have raised today. So thanks for the presentation, Anne and Mr Burgh, I thought it was, it was really useful.
Thank you very much leader. I'm going to bring the debate to a close, but I'll let councillor Angus Morrison in. Because I think everything has been well aired and basically, you know, what we put forward, it's out of our hands, the final decision, so don't want to be going, people going over the same ground all the time. I think everyone's clear now where we're at.
Yeah, thank you, Convina, thank you letting me in. I think we should welcome this money regardless of, you know, two million is a lot of money for for our communities. The only point I would like to make is that we need to maintain sight of our role of communities. We've heard a lot of Stornoway, West, Stornoway East, Stornoway North, whatever today. It's good our badge, and I see Lox is in one of them with the Stornoway area. My fear going forward would be that we get swallowed up because the discussions today have shown that that's possibly what would happen when we were awarding funding. But we've got area forums in the three areas of Lox. We're pulling together a local place plan for the three areas and a wider arching local place plan, which will likely show the needs of the community as well. That would be my, I welcome everything that's been said and the way, the way things are going. But it would be a concern going forward about the dissemination of funding when applications were put forward, that the smaller areas wouldn't get swamped up by the larger area.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Morrison. Who's want to come in, very quickly Duncan?
Thanks, Convina, just one, one final point, you know, I understand that Orkney were awarded money previously and I was wondering, you know, an experience from an island community on how they address that kind of matter, you know, just briefly.
Yeah, yes, it's a very interesting point, Convina, and I have of course been in touch with Orkney just from my own local contacts there because that funding was originally intended for Kirkwall, just simply for the, only for the, for the capital. But I think that following representations after, it's some funding now can be allocated to the the wider, the wider county, as they would say in Orkney. So it's, it it does seem that for that funding anyway, there there was some flexibility after it had been awarded. We don't know how this, whether that will apply with Pride in place, so, but we will keep in touch. We will keep in touch with with Orkney on how, on what their experience has been. Just to assure councillor Morrison, I think any board I've given, I've indicated that there are already, there are already some ex officio members of that board and it certainly wouldn't be allocated on a population basis, you know. It will, it will be a board appointed, I think, on the basis of local interest, but not pro rata the population. So if, so the Lox area or the South Lewis area, whatever that is, will will not, will not necessarily be outvoted by, by, by the, by the town. Thank you, thank you, Convina.
Okay, thank you very much Chief Executive. So we've had a good debate, quite a lot of good points were made, well, all the points made were were good. You know, the the three places that we are going to put forward, you know, everyone, everyone's aware of them. But again, it's out of our hands, we don't make the final decision. So at the end of the day, whichever area gets the money, I think we should welcome at the end of the day, whichever area gets the money, I think we should welcome it. I know, you know, other places will be a wee bit annoyed that they won't be getting the money, but you know, twenty million over ten years is quite a significant sum of money and you could also, you know, bring in more funding, it'll be, you know, part of it will be much funding for projects, so, you know, the, the sum at the end of the day could be double twenty million over ten years, so we should welcome that, so. The sham, recommendation for approval of paragraph three point one of the report, do you all agree with it? Okay, thank you. Quickly, Malcolm, please.
Yeah, Convena, just for the avoidance of doubt, we will submit the three options on the, on the slide. And if you need us to run through these, Anne could do that, but I think we're clear. It'll be, it'll be three, the three options on the final slide.
Yeah, can you run through them again now, so that everyone's quite clear, please?
Farah and South Eus and Ben Bechler and North Eus, that's one. South Lewis, Stornoway East and Stornoway West and Northwest Lewis and South Lewis.
Thank you very much. I'm seeing your hands up, councillor Gordon Murray, very quickly.
Thank you, Convena. Can you send round that presentation, because it was quite difficult to read. And and just clarification on where the areas are in terms of South Lewis, et cetera, sorry.
Yes, that will be sent, yeah, that will be sent round to all members, we couldn't even make it out in the chamber, so it will be sent round. So, thank you very much. So you all agree to the report. The last item on the agenda is an urgent item, appointment of member to the Integration Joint Board. The report is by the chief executive. This report seeks the appointment of a Corla member to the Board of the Western Isles Integration Joint Board, following the resignation of councillor Norman Misty McDonald. Councillor George Murray has indicated that he is willing to become a substantive member of the board, which would leave a vacancy for the substitute member. Do members approve the appointment of councillor Murray as a substantive member of the Western Isles Integration Joint Board? Okay, can I now ask for nominations for a substitute member to the board? We will take councillor Murray's, please. Substitute member to the IJIB? Don't all rush at once? Then we'll probably have to leave it till February meeting. Okay, we've got three substitutes, we need four, do we? So three not enough? No?
Not at this rate of attrition, Convena.
All right, okay, okay then. So we need a fourth substitute member. We might as well just leave it till December then and try and see if there's anyone amongst the membership who are willing to serve as our substitute member. Yes, yeah, pass the parcel. Yes, absolutely. Okay, so we, we'll leave that then till December meeting. Okay, thank you all for attending, and the next, next scheduled meeting of the Corla will be on Wednesday, the third of December, twenty twenty five, but there will be a special meeting of the Corla on the nineteenth of November, which will consider the recommendation from the Planning Application Board meeting of the eleventh of November and the Audit and Scrutiny Committee meeting of the tenth of November. Derek, I think you're time to get in.
Just to confirm, the, the meeting on the nineteenth has been confirmed yet?
Okay.
The date may change, we will confirm in the next day or two.
That's fine, you'll notify us anyway, keep us posted. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.